I got it. All right, one allegiance to the flag on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was joking.
Well, you never know. Could be in trouble on any one day.
You have a good thing, so let's start with the urgency exits from over here, the one you came in. If something happened, follow Ron, he'll be your first one out, just follow him. So with that, please silence all of your electronic devices, watches, phones. We have a pager network, but just please do that. We will be following the rules procedure to not provide this warrant on January third of this year. I do have the mics on, just a little note, when I turn the mics on for you guys, it picks up everything. So if you have a sidebar conversation, it will be recorded for ever. So be careful what you say. With that, we next item up would be the approval of minutes. Everybody get a chance to review them, everything okay? And do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move.
Move by Adrian, second by Doug, any other comments? All in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes are approved, legal notice of public date of 10th, 2024, The Daily Messenger. Order of business will be as the agenda on the table over there, hopefully everybody signed in if you didn't, please do. PB zero seven zero two dash twenty-three, sidewalk family trust, Ron.
Yeah, at the last meeting, you asked to have detailed soils analysis of the third lot that's being created. I've talked with the applicant's attorney and with the and the soils expert, he is working on preparing that report. He said he would have it by May tenth,
Right.
which would be in time to put in your packets for the May seventeenth meeting. The neighbors had requested our head provided some documentations.
Right.
The applicant had provided some documentation.
Yep.
We basically asked for more details. Mr. Baker is a very good soils expert and I'm awaiting his report.
Okay. So basically, we're just gonna continue this to the fifteenth. Yep, fifteenth of May to tenth was when it comes in, fifteenth of May is the next meeting it's going to. Anything else from staff on this, on Fowler, anything? Yep, you guys are good, anything from the board? I have a motion to approve the resolution that tables this to the fifteenth and
Excuse me, is it continued public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is a continued public hearing, so I gotta go through the public hearing stuff, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here or online to speak for or against this application? Anyone here online to speak for or against this application? Okay, with that.
We do have some people online.
You have one online? I did say online, anybody online wanting to speak on the Fowler application? Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution which tables this to the May fifteenth?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Who shall?
Aye.
The beat?
Aye.
It was those.
Aye.
Aye. You got it, we'll see you on the fifteenth. Okay, subdivision PB zero five zero one dash twenty-four, this is the Debra Potter. Can you just kind of stand up and tell us a little bit about what you want to do? Okay, yeah, if you stand right and buy that mic there, they can pick it up and they can hear you much better. Just kind of give us an overview of what you're doing.
All right, it's my first time doing this, so.
Ah, you'll be fine, we don't bite, go ahead.
Okay, so I have approximately two point six acres that I'm looking to subdivide into two separate lots. One, lot number one is approximately one acre, one point one six five acres for a future house build.
Okay.
My daughter and her husband here, we're getting property, that acre property to them for a house build.
Aye.
The other lot number two, which is approximately one point six acres, currently is where my house is located, so that'll remain obviously the same.
Okay.
So we're just looking for approval to split the two.
Perfect, should basically be online and on paper.
Yes.
Okay, Ron.
We drafted a resolution for your consideration tonight.
Yep.
We've got the secret part one, so the application is complete. Falls in your court.
Okay, Dan? Tim?
I don't have it in.
Engineering, okay, it is a public hearing, do you have anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone here in the room to speak for or against this application? Anyone online to speak for or against this application?
There's nobody online.
They heard me talking and they jumped right off, I'm telling you. So applicant has read the resolution and you're okay with the resolution?
Yeah, I had a question concerning the easement.
Okay.
I know we discussed it in our prior meetings about the easement going on the back line of the property up to lot number one. How do I get the easement, I don't know.
Ask the staff, sit down with staff, there's paperwork that you gotta go through between them and engineering, they all know all the right paperwork to do. The easement is more critical, not for the subdivision, but for when the sewer line, when you're the actual do the site plan, correct?
So it's important at this stage due to the width of the lot.
Okay.
If you have access to sewer or the conventional septic, you can have a narrower lot.
Right.
So in this situation, they want to connect it into the town sewer which runs behind your house. So we need to make sure that the lot that they're creating has a permanent easement on file.
Right.
To allow for sewer connection.
Right, and it's just some paperwork to be filled out, sent to the town attorney.
And then as part of the subdivision then?
Yeah.
Right. So then, yeah, the boundary of that description of that easement would be drafted up typically and provided to the town for review. The language of that easement, we have templates that we use, kind of government that would be forwarded to you for your review. We make sure that that makes sense and you're okay with those requirements.
All right, so how do I start that processing?
You can just call my office, reach out to us, and we will help you through that process.
Okay, are you okay? Okay, sure, yes.
Yes, we're a builder.
Can you tell me with the name and address, please?
Paul Johnson, M. Johnson Construction, six seven zero North Wind Road, Rochester, New York.
Okay.
Timeline on the subdivision part and does the easement have to happen before we get the tax, new tax?
Correct, you can't file with the county until you have the final subdivision, this is only preliminary right now. So then it's still not a buildable lot, you still have to come back for site plan. But we're still ways out.
And so how many, so on a timeline, one month, two months? And does the easement have to happen prior to the subdivision?
Well, yes, that's what we're, so tonight, as long as the board agrees, you'll get your preliminary two lot subdivision, which one of the conditions on here is the easement has to be filed, so you're gonna have to go through that process. That all depends on how quickly that she can get that easement drawn up, filed with the county. And then you can submit the maps to be signed and then you come back for final subdivision and then you can file that map with the county, which will make two lots. At that point, that lot still is not a buildable lot until you guys come back and from this board for a site plan.
Okay, and the expenses to our mom prior to that? And with that said, the top map, topography map, all that has to be done prior to or after? So we have to show you our E1.
It's gonna be in your site plan.
After or before subdivision?
That's after subdivision.
After, okay, so.
Fremont did, Fremont and Paranawa, they did that, they just haven't drawn it out.
Yeah, the subdivision is a two-stage review, so it's like, right now and then everything tonight will, as soon as the plans get drafted up, then it'll be pretty much the same plan that you have before us now for final. Then, to your point, the site plan which will contain all the site-specific information, including topography, utility alignment, house location and all that stuff.
Okay, so to simplify this for the homeowners, the subdivision will happen before or after? Okay, it will happen before, so then we will be able to do all the top mathing afterwards.
You're gonna do two approvals, tonight's potentially one, then you gotta come back in for another one for some that gets filed. Then they'll be back before the planning board with the site plan.
Preliminary and then final. Four times you meet with us because of such an AP.
So is this the second time?
We're real nice, pretty slick, I gotta tell you, that's pretty slick, no, that's the first time.
I didn't try it, Deborah.
I just have one more question, as far as orientation of the building, so I.
You can talk to staff and talk to them about all of that, yeah, yeah, talk to them. And talk to them anytime if you want to get started on those plans, but talk to them first and they'll help you through that whole process of what we require for site plan.
So I think as far as like a timeline, I know the homeowners have sold their home and we're trying to be efficient. So if there's anything we can do prior and then.
It's why you start working on those site plans now with staff so that they know what's going on. We finish up the subdivision, get that done, once that's filed, then the rest of it can start right away and you can go through preliminary, find a site.
I do that at the same time, we don't have to, that's it, okay, that's the real question.
You can work behind the scenes at the same time, you can't come to the planning board at the same time.
Okay, and that's one to one.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, twice a month?
We meet twice a month, yeah.
So last and final question, architectural board, is there aside from?
No.
No issue with that?
No.
Okay.
We're the final arbitrar. And the best thing you can do is sit down with staff so they tell you the ins and outs and when you come in here with preliminary and there's only a couple of conditions, you take those changes, you go to final and everything's good.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? You're okay with the resolution now that you understand that piece?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented?
So who?
Who but Doug, second by Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Delusion?
Aye.
Don't be sorry. Adrian, go ahead.
Aye, okay, that piece is done, preliminary is done. Work with staff, get that thing prepared, so you get the final, work with staff on the site plan and we get things rolling, okay? Alrighty, thank you guys. Okay, other board actions, review of the eighteen sixteen driveway and parking area, Dan.
Yeah, I'll start this one.
Thanks, guys.
We do have a representative from the eighteen sixteen meeting house here.
Hello, sir.
Before I turn it over to him, I'll give you guys a little background, I got a phone call in regards to their parking area and driveway entrance. As you are aware, County Route eight is being milled and supplies of that milling might be available, it sounded great, it's up to you.
Okay.
Also, as you guys are aware, we're working on a site plan for the eighteen sixteen meeting house, which we have told them before they could do any dirt. We had to get the site plan approved by this board.
Yep.
They have asked me due to the timing of the millings from County Route eight, that there would be an exception, so that's why they're here tonight to talk to you and see if you allow those millings to be used now for a parking area. Even though we don't have the official site plans back, the parking area, from my understanding, isn't changing the location, but I'll let Dave talk about that.
All right, just a little side note, Dan didn't call me. My timing was, let's go ahead and do it, because I'd rather have them do something with a little tailing than have it mounted up in the parking lot area and just hold. So go ahead, sir, tell us your name and that and then we'll go from there.
Do you want me over there?
You can speak from there, I got that mic turned on.
All right, I'm Dave Brunix, I work with eighteen sixteen Farmington Meeting House.
Dave?
Live in Massillon, first house out of Farmington.
Okay.
It really comes down to a timing issue, it's a pretty good opportunity for us to get the millings, they're doing milling right next door to us. And I wanted to be very careful not to violate any of our earlier discussions by doing any kind of site work without permission. We are working on the site plan and I should be bringing one probably the next meeting.
Aye.
To it, but in order to bring the fill and the millings in to do this, I need to put a construction entrance in, so we don't tear up the road, and I'll probably have to pull some of the top soil off.
Yep.
And through there. So what I'm asking is, can I cut down, put a construction entrance down, you know where our sign is? I put the entrance there, because we're already leveled with the road height. And then strip topsoil where we can stack the fill and the milling down. And so as not to leave a large pile of dirt somewhat leveled.
Yeah, we don't want a large pile of dirt or a large pile of dents.
Right, so, but I want to make sure everything is upset.
I like that, I like it. Okay, stacked, Tim?
So yeah, I talked to Dave, you know, my concern was, you know, obviously the construction entrance. They're gonna be putting these big trucks and hauling in off the road, I don't want them tearing up the shoulder of my road, so.
Right.
That's one of the conditions I would have is to make sure that construction entrance in. He already has the driveway permit, I've already issued that to him a while ago. So we can make that the construction entrance and I don't have an issue with it.
That's far enough from the intersection, so too, for the reality reasons or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know where the sign is.
Yeah, it's way, it's far enough down the road where it wouldn't be an issue. But there's gotta be some kind of a construction entrance there. My household told them concerns about trucks getting in and out of there. Can they get in there, but I'm getting stuck, you know, and something I did not mention is they gotta, you know, if it's raining or something and they're dragging mud out that road, that's gotta be cleaned, kept clean.
And then.
Whatever way you have to do it, it needs to be kept clean.
What do you think, what do you think the, how much like the movement like? It's basically a half acre or less or something, because it's a small little parking lot?
Yeah, I don't.
You probably think, you know, I mean, he's not doing a ton, obviously, but.
No, compared to how big the lot is, I think that we're under all of our stormwater concerns, so under that acre threshold.
We're well under, well under an acre for the parking lot. Trying to do math in my head, it's never been my thing.
Forty-three, five sixty?
Forty-three deep, I think we're only at around two forty or two fifty on the current rendition of it. And we're not really worried about the walkways at this point, I don't know what percentage of an acre that is.
I think you're well under the threshold.
Yeah, I think that we'd be under the threshold and be okay.
I mean, I've seen, you've seen a map of what they're trying to do before, but that it's okay or something to. I get what they're trying to do, but we're not jumping the gun by not seeing it ourselves.
Right. And Tim, do you want approval of that construction entrance before they start to use it?
Yes.
Okay, so please reach out, Tim, make sure you get the approval to use that before you actually.
I was going to anyways.
Okay, I figured you would, but just in case, Tim, I mean, Dan.
All right, and I think Ron has something too, so, well, I'm looking forward to night because we have in record that they're not allowed to do anything. I would need a letter of support of this tonight, that I'm sure that could be drafted.
John can draft them.
As long as the board was okay and allowed to sign it.
Cool.
That's what I'm looking for.
Ron.
Okay, I just need clarification. I've heard two things. One, they want a construction entrance to allow them to bring the millings in and pile it on the site.
Right.
The other thing I heard was they're gonna use those millings to lay out their parking lot.
Right.
Which is.
Which I guess I.
I think he's asking, are you stockpiling or are you actually gonna lay out the parking lot?
Well, if we stay, if we leave the millings in a pile, they're gonna turn into one solid mass of millings. So it'll be somewhere in between really, I'll have to level them out some so we can work them.
You're gonna take up some topsoil first to level out your parking area, then you're gonna lay out the tailings. You may not finish the compaction of them, but you'll at least get them out of a pile.
Right.
Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so he's proposing to design a parking lot that you haven't seen yet.
Correct.
And you're being asked to give approval of that.
The answer is, and you have provided us with some level of site plan?
Yes, and I will have updated ones, I should have them for your next meeting.
So the plans that were originally gave to us didn't meet standard to move it forward to you guys, so.
Okay.
They have hired BME.
BME.
To take those plans and get them to the point of the level it needs to be.
With the parking lot location, then that hasn't really changed, it's just the technical details of the plan.
Correct.
Right, and I would caution the planning board to grant approval on something they haven't seen. And I would do it only with the caveat that the applicant understands that if they do grant approval for layout of parking lot, that it may be subject to change.
Basically, during their own risk, but staff has seen.
So some of the things that came up in regards to the parking lot wasn't really the shape, but the mouth of it aligned that we were looking. So I think it's important for the applicant to know that there might be some fine adjustments, but the overall area.
Right.
We're pretty comfortable with.
Okay.
In the long run, is this gonna be stay on the parking lot or is it gonna be something else later, we don't know yet.
At this point, we're talking millings for now.
As a parking lot?
As money moves forward.
Something different.
Right.
Yeah, because I know there's a hole.
With a nonprofit, you can't promise.
No, I know, I know.
You know, the dream scenario is a beautiful paved parking lot with yellow stripes, but stripes are expensive, so.
Yeah, remember our design standard would be pavement at the road for the first one, can't be.
Right, right, there'll be, there'll be some requirements for pavement at the road.
Absolutely.
Absolutely to do that, and we have always required parking lots to be straight, so I don't know how we're gonna maybe some time to do that, but it's certainly gonna be in the plans to have that straight.
Right, our site plan actually shows it with all the.
Right, right, double stripe, all that good stuff.
All right, now I just want the record to show I haven't seen anything.
I appreciate that, yep.
I'm responding to what I'm hearing you tonight.
Okay, board, Tim, what are your thoughts on this? I mean, I hate to lose the tailings, but I understand what Ron's concerned.
Yeah, I'm willing to take the legal pay.
Okay, Doug?
I mean, I guess it's okay having staff seeing some plans all over under acre disturbance. I mean, you know, ultimately, it might have to be fine integrated, drainage too is one of the things that I have. So Rob, they're willing to do that.
Right. You go ahead and email out the plans that you do have now, so we can kind of see it, so we can say we changed.
Well, I got one more thing, I mean, the topsoil files, you know, stockpile there, it's gonna need to be, you know, siloed up or something around, so. You'll probably work with him.
Yeah, I'll work with him on that and incur after it's.
Still fence is in the car right now?
So, yeah, that's all we got.
Adrian? Okay.
You gotta change it later.
So we can have John draft a letter from my signature saying that this, go ahead.
You know who John is, right?
I don't know what to tell. Wait. Hi, Ron will draft a, oh, Ron? Ron, I'm sorry. Ron draft the letter, I just looked you up your bag, John. Ron draft the letter that basically covers what we talked about tonight, we all sign it, maybe then we'll get her going. But we don't want you to lose the tailings, I mean, that's a hell of a high cost thing for a nonprofit, if you were to lose those tailings. And it helps the county at the same time, so.
Okay, and I won't do anything as far as the construction entrance until the letters.
You got the letter in place and then once you do the construction entrance, get the approval from Tim before you use it, okay?
Okay.
All right?
You want to go on before I do, Tim?
Dan, you're on.
I'd sit on it as they count over them.
All right, so that action's been put to bed, open discussion, Ron.
Only thing I have to report is that the contractor for the sidewalk project today, this afternoon, at four o'clock, gave me the insurance documents.
Nice.
Think tomorrow we'll issue the notice to proceed with the sidewalk project finally, after all this time.
Good.
State DOT has plans out for intersection improvements on three thirty-two to replace the signal poles, to replace street lighting at the intersections. And they've asked us for comments. Tim has looked at it, he's gonna give me some comments, I'm getting comments from the water and sewer department and we'll get that back to them. Basically, what they're doing is realigning the crosswalks, realigning the lighting of the intersection, realigning the signals that have now the blinking left turn arrows that screw everybody up, including yours truly. And so we'll be getting comments back to them on that, and then finally.
Just a second, they are also, aren't they also changing it to a video video recognition of vehicles rather than using the plates in the ground or whatever they got? So that'll make, in theory, a better traffic flow management in theory.
Hopefully.
Okay.
Hopefully. The other thing is we are preparing a list of permitted uses for discussion with the applicants for quite soon.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll be meeting with them to get that moving along. And then the last thing is, we're very close to a contract for starting work on the open space and parks recreation master plan.
Cool.
So hopefully that'll be all underway, you know?
Good.
Good.
I like that. Okay, Dan?
All right, your next meeting, you have a preliminary five lot subdivision down on eight in Holtz. Matty's Power Sports was supposed to turn a updated semitole into you guys, making it.
We've seen anything at all.
Or not, so I don't know if that's gonna come forth or not, okay?
With Matty's, what, I mean, with him barricading all those driveways right now, obviously because of, you know, theft problem or something, I mean, that can't be good for the fire department or anybody in general, right?
So we had a meeting with him and.
They've got big doubts and threats out there, but I'm sure I waited and you're not doing.
We discussed a lot of that, so he was supposed to have some answers for us and as of yet, they have not forthcoming.
You have a thinking, what are you trying to do to a point, but it's also probably not the greatest move to?
But the other side of that is based on the conversation I overheard, is that fire would not go on site anyway because of how close it is to the building, they would fight it from ninety-six or over in the car wash.
Yeah, so I mean, the fire marshals also sat in that meeting and some of those comments came from him saying, we're talking to the fire department.
Well, let's say the house next door is the problem, now they can't go down his driveway very far because it's got blocked all the way up the main road, I mean.
Right, again, it's.
Well, he wants to put a fence across the front of that, but the end of the building, but. But we're gonna probably have to have him fence the whole back area and he can't just put a fence in the front. We don't, that doesn't, I mean, it certainly keeps people from driving in and driving out and stuff, it doesn't really help. So, yeah, we got the sewer down over there. But fire, I think they said they would fight from ninety-six anyway.
As an idea.
Uh there there was definitely some problems that came up in concerns, that's a good word, that came up in our meeting and. I think he walked away with at least hearing our concerns.
I believe.
So hopefully we will hear back from.
And then we'll continue with.
Let me, let me just add to that, he came in Friday, you were at some meeting somewheres. Right?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't know he'd given.
And uh showed me a drawing and I said, I'm not gonna tell you yes or no, I, you. Set up a meeting with Dan, Augie and I and we'll go over this. Okay? So a lot of things you talked about, I mentioned to him. We'll see where it goes, I mean, you went down to talk to Augie and I haven't heard anything about any day yet.
Okay, so hopefully something's forthcoming. Uh you also have uh Sky Solar over on Commercial, they're back on your agenda.
I mean, we should have a full house.
Yeah, yeah, and then you just continued Fowler, obviously, to your next meeting as well.
Build the house.
So um definitely some big projects at your next meeting. Also, PRC is tomorrow. Thing is, uh the pre-construction meeting for Farborough is tomorrow. So you'll start actually seeing that project move forward. They've uh I actually already staged out there, so I anticipate them after their pre-construction to really get moving pretty quick.
Okay, Tim?
Uh not much for me, just spring cleanup this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
That would keep you busy.
Keep the boys busy. Like be hauling stuff there and stuff.
There you go, yeah. Uh Lance?
I don't really have anything additional.
Public, any other comments, sir? Any comments, sir? Okay, with that, uh my turn, I continue to work with the staff I needed, I I did meet with the staff with uh Matty's. Uh to share our concerns, make sure you understood. Hope you did, uh we'll go from there and see what happens, other than that, just day-to-day stuff that we deal with. Anybody have anything, any other comments? Okay, Adrian?
The end of Colorado, they're clearing all that land.
The property owner came in and met with us and uh said that he has been dealing with a lot of people. Dumping there and living there and doing things on the property and he wanted to remove his trees so that you could see.
Callet and. Repent here? Oh, they dead end all the way there?
Guy came down with the plans for townhouse.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
But the townhouse project has expired, uh so there is no plans, so it's a property owner clearing trees on his property.
It just facilitates the dump and go.
Yeah, doesn't D E C have some kind of rule about three-inch trees or something like that, nothing?
Do with the removal of the subs once they're not there.
Well, the bat thing, but.
The bat thing and then.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Do we have a bad issue in our town? I mean, do we have?
Yes, we do.
In the whole area or?
No, in the town, we had to go through that process with the D E C for the offering trip.
Oh, okay.
But it's stabilized, obviously, or a little because he's not. He's not doing the rest.
So we've definitely received some phone calls, but there's nothing in regulations to.
Yeah.
Stop him from clearing his land.
Clearing his own land?
Victor, people are very nervous.
I'm thrilled, I won't.
It's true, Lance is the neighbor down there. Anyone have anything else? Ouch, me adjourned by Adrian, thank you to my Doug, all in favor? Alright, yeah, certainly got a record.